I didn't realize it was after seven. Call this meeting to order. Sorry about that, ladies and gentlemen. We'll start with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barnes, Reed, Brown?
Here.
Decker?
Here.
Kraus?
Here.
Brandt, and Mayor Domingo.
Here, thank you.
Mayor and councilmembers comments? Are there any comments this evening?
Just gonna...
Just say to everyone, please check the Holland Park webpage. We posted on there what we're gonna have for the Juneteenth celebration.
Can you remind everyone the date? What date? Juneteenth is? The date?
It's Juneteenth.
Yes.
Just, it's okay, because I know you put it on there. For item F, I guess, I don't know if we can vote to have a table now, but just gonna ask for that to be tabled. So I don't know if we have a vote now or later.
You wanna make a motion to table item F?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. You need a roll call in that, please? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes. Roll call, okay. F has been tabled. Thank you.
Mayor Domingo, I just wanted to make note that there is an amended agenda today.
Item K on the back is the amendment on the second page. That'll also be a roll call vote. Pardon?
I don't see that in K.
It was sent out, I know. I got a copy of it right here.
Well, you know, you may not have been...
It's Discussion and Approval of Resolution 2016, Discharge of CDBG Mortgage for 114 West Walnut. So there will be an item K. Okay. Anything else? Yes.
Thursday. It was a terrific day in Albion. Those of you who got to be there, there were approximately 250 people that turned out for the groundbreaking for the hotel downtown. And everybody seems excited, and I was overwhelmed by the turnout. And our mayor and our city manager represented us well. And I think it's an exciting time in Albion. So thank you to everyone who came, and those of you who couldn't come, please come down and take a look at the renderings that are up on those new signboards. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no more, I got a card, a thank you card, from Troop 158. When we gave them the approval to spend the night in Victory Park, they said they really had a good time. They were going after their polar bear award. Unfortunately, it never got below 32 degrees, so they couldn't get their polar bear awards. But they sent us a card, said thank you, and it's signed by everyone. I'll have that passed around. I also had a Mr. Spencer call me on a National Recognition Day for T-ball coming up in June. They'll need the council's support on that. I think right now Larry Williams and Harry Bonner are pushing that forward. So if you hear anything about that, hopefully that'll be coming, and it's long overdue. Jerry Sikarsky started that back in, I don't know, oh, 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 oh. And so we did have a dedication down there with the rock. If I remember right, was it Mr. Parks? Did that for Boy Scouts or?
I think so, something like that.
In Victory Park, so that'll be coming up soon, so keep that in mind. The only two things I have. Yes?
I'd like to say thank you to the Boy Scouts, too, because Becky and I didn't expect the card that we got. We were, when they asked, when we voted for them to use the card, we were sitting there talking to each other, and she said, "Let's take some hot chocolate." And so she came with this great big thing of hot chocolate, and I baked about four or five of those pieces. So we went down there that night, and they didn't know we were coming. We kinda surprised them. And they was, I mean, I've never expected this. This shows you, there's still some good kids.
Okay. If there is no furthermore, we'll move on with our presentations. We'll start with the EDC update from Peggy Sint, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So as Councilmember Kraus has already mentioned, Thursday was a big deal in Albion. One of only many that will be happening over the next few years, I think. And I, too, would like to thank everyone who made the effort to make, to get out and join the festivities and help us celebrate such a big project for the downtown. And obviously, not everyone can get away during the day, and certainly many would have a reason to, you know, be at work. Gosh, what a shame. But that's, you know, that's one of the update things. They are, the project, contrary to what some have heard, the project is going forward. We anticipate at this point that the real structural groundbreaking with backos and things will be late summer, it looks like, because they're still working out a few details on some stuff. They don't quite have all the drawings done, and they're waiting for the Marriott people to approve the renderings that you saw that are posted on those signs. So there's this, all this very cumbersome process that they have to work through, but they're getting there. So that's very exciting. 101 North Superior, you are aware, because it's next door to you, that that's moving right along. They have framed out, I think, all the windows now on the front, so that they can now take final measurements and order the windows for the, what is the storefront, if you will. And they are hopeful that they will be done and ready to have people in there by late August. So they're hoping to make it happen in time for school start for the college. Remains to be seen if they make it, but it's gonna be close at least, so that's a good thing. Let's see. Taco Bell was putting up its sign today, as I drove by, so I know that's very, very close. And that one's near and dear to the hearts of an awful lot of people. There are all sorts of projects going on. If you haven't driven out to see what's going on, the Brembo site on, at the corner of M-60 and 30 Mile Road, you really need to do that. This foundry is going up on the 30 Mile Road side of the property, and it's just an amazing facility. You can just park on the side of the road and kind of gaze in admiration at it if you want. It's really very cool to look at, and it will be an awful lot of extra jobs for the area, so that's very exciting. They, some of you may know that there's a new business next to them, which is a supplier to them. They have hired some people, and Brembo thinks that there could be other suppliers coming that will want to locate either right next to them or very close. So there's some opportunities for expansion there. Team One Plastics has just had their ribbon cutting for their expansion, and you are seeing a tax abatement application. I haven't talked to Cheryl and the mayor yet, but I'm guessing maybe the first council meeting in June, you'll see that on your agenda to approve. And they are very excited about what they're doing. There will be some more stuff going on, probably in another year and a half or two years. But they, they're very conservative. They wanna wait to make sure they have business in place before they do anything. So they're working towards that now, but it's looking very positive that there could be some additional activity out there in the future. The mayor has spoke at their ribbon cutting and did a great job, and it was, it was quite a nice event. So I know some of you made that, too, and that's exciting to see. So there's all sorts of stuff like this going on. Small piece of personal news, which I think you actually already know, but is that I'm going to be retiring at the end of September, and the EDC board is going to be conducting a search. We've had some initial conversation at our last board meeting, and Herm McCall, who is the board chair, will be convening the executive committee of the board to have some more detailed discussion about how to proceed with, with doing the search. I'm getting the word out in the professional circles so that people are aware that there's an opening coming up. We're looking at some opportunities, maybe to expand the staffing in some way at EDC as we move forward, and that's all sort of to be determined at this point, but it's, this seems like a really good time for transition, because there's so much good going on in town that it should attract people who are interested in being part of something like that. So I'm very optimistic that we'll be able to recruit somebody who has a lot of good skills, and we'll be able to really continue to move the city forward. So that's personally exciting, but I think it's also an exciting opportunity for the community. I'm out of ideas. What else would you like to hear about? Any questions?
What are you gonna do with all that retirement time?
Oh, I have plans. I have a long list of things I wanna do.
Well, just two things. Thank you for your service. I know you mentioned that you've been here...
Thank you.
For a while there.
Yeah, 21 years.
So we appreciate that. And then, you know, I just mentioned to you, but I think it would be helpful. It sounds like you all, the EDCs, in the early stages of the search process, but it would be helpful if we could have at some point a meeting with...
Sure.
The council, so the councils is informed about what's going on. So, okay, sorry about that. So that was just my one suggestion.
Sure.
That that should happen, so, not that we have to know every little detail, but it'd be helpful to have an input, because, you know, considering what's gonna be happening in the near future downtown, I think it'd be helpful to have more voices.
Certainly more information. As I mentioned to you before, I will let Herm McCall know that there's an interest in doing that. I'm sure that can be arranged.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay.
Got all cheap.
I did.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have the Big Read update from Chess Roberts.
Hello, all. Thank you so much for letting me come and talk this evening. I wanted to tell you a story about May 11th as a way of starting. So on May 11th, I was eager to go to the National Endowment for the Arts website, so the national website, for a reason I'll get into for a minute. But I went to the website, and I found something that was really exciting to me. So I get to their main page, the Big Read page for the NEA. And as usual, they're cycling through various photographs of books, of sort of general buildings, of people I don't know. And then, all of a sudden, I saw on the NEA's Big Read website, this building. And in front of it, several of our Big Read leaders from last year, and several of our volunteers soaking wet and smiling, from the 3rd of October, which was our kickoff event last year. And there we were, on this national website, and I was so excited. So that brought me considerable and unexpected joy. But the thing that brought me considerable and happily expected joy was that on that website, on that day, the NEA announced that there were 77 cities that got Big Read grants this year, and that Albion was, for the second time, one of those cities. So as you know, starting last December, the Big Read Planning Committee began to convene again. We selected a book, Ray Bradbury's Fahrenheit 451. We began to imagine what it would look like to come together again as a community. Last year, we had an excess of 37 local organizations that partnered with us in the Big Read programming throughout the month of October, and we submitted our application. And we are so thankful to the local funders who the NEA and Arts Midwest now join, and I want to acknowledge them. So Albion College is the applicant organization. Two key partners were the Albion District Library and Albion Public Schools, in addition to many other local partners. Thanks to the Albion philanthropic women and Team One Plastics, we'll be able to fund the Big Read Youth Leadership Program this summer again. And as of right now, we have 19 youth who are signed up to be a part of this year's Youth Leadership Program. One of them is here, as well as one of the volunteers who will be working with, working with us this summer. And then, thanks to the Linda Konczynski Fund at the Albion Community Foundation, and also the Albion Homer United Way, as well as, I hope, more local sponsors, we will be able to put on what I think is really an outstanding program this coming year. And we will expand and reach outward to share the great love and joy of reading, but also the great love and joy, I think, that is the town of Albion. And I just wanted to share, like, one more piece of information, and that is that one of the things I didn't expect to take joy in last year in November was the act of writing the final report for the Big Read. So the federal government gives you a big chunk of money, and then you have to say what you did with it. And I thought, okay, I will say what we did with it, because otherwise, they won't give me any more money. And so I wrote the report, and I didn't expect that writing the report would actually be such a joyful experience, because I had the opportunity simply to tell the story of our town over the course of that month. And I'm pleased to report that when they got back to us about the final report, to tell us in fact that, like, they were gonna give us the rest of the money, so good job, they also said that we, as a community, had knocked it out of the park. And that was language from Arts Midwest and the NEA. And I just thought that that was a real tribute to the work that we had done collectively as a community to make something happen. And I'm really looking forward to October again, because I think the Big Read gives us an opportunity to show ourselves and also other people a thing that we all know is true, which is that we're a community that is deeply invested in the educational lives of our youth, and in giving those students an opportunity to lead for us. I'm just really happy and thankful that we have the opportunity to do that again this year. I would just like to invite all of you, and all of you, to partner with us again to knock it out of the park, so to speak. So thank you so much for all your support already, and for all the support that I'm sure will be coming our way.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Next, Richard Lindsay with the Oakland Dialysis Center.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanna just hand these around. I've got an invitation for everybody to attend our open house. And first of all, I'm Richard Lindsay. It's odd still to say, not say that I'm Corporation Counsel for the county. I'm the new Executive Director of Development and Community Legislative Affairs at Oakland Hospital. I'm just finishing up my, or just starting my fifth week of work at Oakland Hospital. One of the chief reasons why I was excited about taking this position was because of Oakland's past and continued commitment to the community of Albion, to be the healthcare provider for this community. We actually built a cement-in eye with City Manager Mitchell, attended, or visited the Dialysis Center two weeks ago, and she said it would be nice to actually come here and invite you all to come to the open house. So that's why I wanted to personally do that. I want to give you a little bit of a background about that. The open house is actually Tuesday, May 24th, from 4:00 to 6:00, and it's at the new Oakland Dialysis Center of Albion LLC facility, which is at 350 V Drive North in Albion. And of course, all the public is invited also, and we put it in the local papers and Facebook and email messages and try to get as many people there as we can to see this beautiful facility. We're gonna have light snacks and tours of the facility available. This is a state-of-the-art 8800 square foot, 12-chair Dialysis Center to serve patients throughout the Albion and Marshall area. The new facility is owned by Oakland Dialysis Center of Albion LLC, which is a joint venture with Fresenius Medical Care North America, in which Oakland Hospital is the majority stakeholder. Fresenius also manages our Dialysis Center in Marshall. Because this is a joint venture, the property is not tax-exempt, and so represents a significant increase on the tax base for the city of Albion. Oakland worked closely with the city of Albion, Albion Public Schools, and other local officials to get, to put this project together. The project required a zoning change, which went through without a hitch. And I'll tell you, zoning in Marshall is a whole different issue. So we appreciate working with the city of Albion on that, and it was very successful and went very quickly in a very simple, easy process. This is a major step forward to share and enhance medical services in both Albion, in the Albion community, and will underscore the partnership the Marshall and Albion communities have developed through our schools, community organizations, and services. Construction costs have been approximately $3 million for this facility, and the process was managed by Albion-based Gordon Martin Builders, and relied heavily on the use of local contractors. The center will employ approximately 12 new full and part-time personnel. Eventually, it may provide service for up to 16 dialysis patients at one time. It's equipped for 12 right now, and there's space to add another four in, which we believe that need will be, that demand will be there pretty quickly. There will be a home dialysis component that currently is not offered at the Oakland Dialysis Center in Marshall, and so it's basically a space where you can go in and be trained in how to use the equipment, and then have that in your, in your home, rather than having to come to the center. Oakland Hospital and the Oakland Medical Group have a longstanding presence in Albion, and we are proud of the service provided by the Albion Internal and Family Medicine location, our laboratory draw station, which is located downtown at the Ralph and Mary Cram Medical Center, and our physical rehabilitation facility, which is also located next to the new Dialysis Center. With this new business venture in Albion, Oakland is again demonstrating its commitment to the Albion community. The facility will, will turn out to be very convenient to our current Albion patients who now must travel to Marshall. So basically, we have a number of patients from the east side of the county that are now traveling all the way to Marshall to use that facility, and they will have a much shorter drive to be able to use this facility. The Marshall facility now is operating at near capacity and opening up to Oakland. Dialysis Center in Albion will also provide additional capacity in Marshall to bring in additional patients. As always, Oakland is doing all it can to address the health needs of the communities we serve, and having adequate access to care is one of the issues identified by the recent Calhoun County Community Health Needs Assessment, and this is part of the reason for developing this program on the side of the county. Marshall-based Oakland service strives to offer convenient access to its residents and to other regional communities. And again, I wanna compliment Mr. Mayor. City Manager, last Thursday was a wonderful day for the, for the city of Albion. I very much enjoyed the opportunity to be over here. I think there's a lot of good things going on in this community. Oakland is extremely proud to be part of the good things that are going on here, and we look forward to doing a lot more good things in this community. And I do wanna state what City Manager stated, which is Albion is open for business. We appreciate that, and Oakland's glad to be partners with Albion. If anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. I hope all of you are able to attend next Tuesday. Questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. Moving on to citizens' comments, persons addressing the city council. Shall limit their comments to agenda items only in no more than five minutes. Proper decorum is required. Are there any questions on the agenda tonight? See none. Consent calendar. Approval of regular session minutes for May 2nd, 2016?
So moved.
Moved and supported. Were there any questions? See none. Voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed the same. Thank you. Items for individual discussion. A, discussion, approval of 2016 street project?
So moved.
Second?
Support.
Okay. Now, any questions?
Well, Mayor and Council, what you have in your packet is, first, a memo from Director Jim Leonardson in regards to the resources since, from between 2003 and 2015, divided by precincts, so you get an idea of how we have utilized our dollars relative to these street projects for that period of time. And then what you have included in your packet is the recommendation for this coming season as well.
There are no further questions. We'll have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. B, request approval for the Albion Fireworks Committee to use Barnes Park Riverside Cemetery for the Albion fireworks viewing on July 3rd of 2016. Is there a rain day?
So moved.
Okay.
Support.
Moved and supported. Are there any questions? Roll call vote, please.
He said there is no rain day.
Pardon?
There is no alternate date.
Yes.
It didn't have it in the letter, doesn't sound...
I'm sure there will be. It'll be out someplace, so...
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Reed? And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. Request approval of memorandum of understanding with Brown Field Redevelopment Authority to operate a dog park on property owned by Brownfield. I guess Cheryl, you'll have to explain that one.
Mayor and Council, if you recall, our dog parks over Yonder Way? Yes. Well, the, at certain, we were having a conversation with the college on them possibly using that as one of their alternative fields during their construction season. And in looking up their records, it was determined that was actually under the name of the Brownfield Authority. It's not a city-owned property. And since we're operating the dog park there, it seemed only appropriate that we actually have a letter of understanding that, you know, that's how we're going to be using it, and that we're agreeing to maintain it for that period of time. So what you have before you is that actual agreement between the city and the Brownfield Authority.
When does that come out of the Brownfield Authority?
I don't have that date handy. I can look it up and get that to you.
And we've been using it as a dog park for how many years now? And now, all of a sudden, somebody wants to make claim to it, or wants us to? Are they trying to relieve themselves from some type of liability, or?
No, this was my idea, since there was no agreement that I could find that allowed us to use it as a dog park. I thought it was a good idea to have something in place.
Okay. The thing, I guess what we're looking at here is the whole field, right?
Yes.
And the whole field wasn't supposed to be a dog park. I thought it was supposed to be just a small piece of it, but... But you're talking about that whole half a block?
We're gonna expand it then?
Pardon?
Are they expanding it then?
The dog park?
Yeah.
That's why I'm asking.
We're using both sections, the one, I guess we call it the smaller section, which had already been the dog park. We weren't planning on using the larger area as a dog park, but once we closed it, a number of individuals had contacted us, because especially with the larger dogs, they like to be able to run them in the larger area. So we are designating both as dog parks, but we don't own the parks. But we just wanted an operating agreement to be in place with the Brownfield.
I guess it's okay, I guess. I don't, I guess I, what is the, what is the, what's it gonna say? We're just in agreement that it's okay for the dogs to go there?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that we are agreeing to maintain it, and we'll...
We've been doing that right all...
Yeah, I know, but we had nothing...
Okay. Yeah, I guess if they need something written, I guess that's okay. I just would hate for it to come back and bite us for some stupid reason.
Their board has approved it?
No, their board hasn't. I ran it past Peggy. Once you approve, then it'll go to their board.
Okay.
Okay. So there's no vote or anything on that, so it's just a matter of now waiting for, yes? Go ahead.
I have one other question about that. What was the part about the college wants to use it as a...
Initially, they did. I think they made other arrangements.
Okay, so we, so we don't need to worry about having to...
No.
Change this once we...
No.
Approve it? Okay. All right.
I know at one time, they talked about using it for flag football or something for the college and whatever. But it's, isn't it under, I guess maybe we need to have the understanding, because most of us probably, when they tore that all down, I mean, wasn't it an understanding it took 30 years to clear that property?
I think it was something like this.
I have heard that there was a certain period of time. I haven't found a document that actually identifies what that period is, but I'll keep looking.
I'm not quite sure where we're at year-wise.
It hasn't been 30, though.
Right. So I just was curious how long before they have the option to come back, and that can be opened back up, you know, from the dog park to property that could possibly be developed, so...
Yes.
All right. D, discussion of the Juneteenth celebration at Holland Park? I'm sorry. As far as I know, there wasn't a vote.
Yeah. Yeah, was there a motion?
Okay.
There was no motion.
So moved.
Support?
Moved and supported. You want a roll call, anything? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Reed? Brown?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes. Okay. Sorry about that. Discussion of the Juneteenth celebration at Holland Park?
The Holland Park Committee and the NAACP will be having the Juneteenth celebration June 18th in Holland Park from 12 to 8. We've got a short program planned. We'll be going in, then after the program and speeches by people, we'll be going into a fun day. And so we're inviting the city of Albion to come out and join us. Juneteenth, if there's someone who does not know what Juneteenth is, after slavery, after the Emancipation Proclamation was given, Texas, it seemed... after the Emancipation Proclamation was given, Texas, it seems, did not get the, get the word that slavery was over. And they had not freed their slaves. And then when they did get the word, I think it was two, three years later, that they got the word that slavery was over. And so at the freeing of the slaves, of course, everybody had a big celebration. And so in Texas, every year, it used to be, basically Texas, that was the one that had the big celebrations because the rest of the states had got the information that slavery was over. And so Texas, when they got it, the celebration started. Well, now it's kind of traveled all through the United States, the Juneteenth celebrations to help Texas celebrate their slaves being free too. I say to people of color that are not black, please come out. Because this is not African-American, it's not a black thing. Because we did not do slavery on our own. There was whites that also helped. If you find on the underground railroad, the houses that the slaves stopped at as they passed. We're not African-American owners. They didn't work with slaves. And they visited houses of people who was another color, who was kind enough to help them to get from slavery to freedom. And so we're asking everybody, I think it was a marvelous thing, Juneteenth is simply being celebrated. And I think that we all should celebrate each other because we're living in this world together. And so we might as well learn, being in this world together, we might as well get along together, enjoy each other's company. And I tell you, it's going to be a great day because we have games for children, a slew of them. And we're going to have face painting and picture making and the big ball bounces. And then we have things for teenagers. We have chill out music for the adults. Mr. Williams is going to run basketball games for the kids down at the basketball court. At five to 5:30, we're going to have gospel music. Then we're going to have a teen show in the, in the basketball court at the end of Holland Park. And I haven't seen one of those outside dances for a long time since I was a kid. So we're going to have that out there for the kids. We're just going to have a day full of fun in the park. By then, we will have a senior section laid. And also while I'm on Holland Park, we're getting ready to do the senior section first week in June. And then I'm in the process now of getting prepared to place the teen section because we're going to be able to do something there too. So we ask you to come out and join us and have fun. And let me tell you something else, too. We're going to have a food court that's going to be out of sight. So if you like, smoke, I think we smoked pork, smoked pork, fried fish, barbecue chicken. All of us will be there. So come out and join us. And the money raised from the food court is going to fund things that we will be putting in. Thank you.
Thank you. What was the date?
June 18th.
Eighteen?
Starting at 12:00.
It starts at 12?
Yes.
Thank you.
Over at eight. Stay and help us clean up.
Okay. E, discussion approval of the use of the city logo by the Americor Vista program?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Are there any questions?
Mayor and Council, this was a request of Councilmember French in regards to the incoming group of presumably young people who will be helping out throughout, well, actually, the next three years on one-year assignments each. And they wanted to create what they call swag. So the hats and the T-shirts and other things on relative to the project. So it'll be the Americor Vista Albion. And they wanted permission to use the Albion seal as part of their materials.
Are there any legal stands against that by any chance, Colin?
Using the city's logo, not as long as we can.
Okay. Just want to make sure that once somebody get out there and get nabbed for doing something wrong. Okay. If there's no further questions, roll call vote.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. F has been tabled. G, request approval to waive for the first right of refusal on Calhoun County foreclosed property? This is property that we don't want.
Support.
Yes, Mayor and Council.
There was a list on there, quite a big list.
Yeah, over 30 properties that Calhoun County recently foreclosed on. And as part of the process, the city has given the right of first refusal. So we could purchase those properties if we found there was a public purpose associated with them that we wanted to do that. I did not identify any myself that we would want to keep. I don't have a chance to look at them or anyone else. But the recommendation is to go ahead and relinquish those back to the county.
My only question about the list, if we could from now on, could you list it whether it's a house or a lot? So when they look at that, they know, are we just looking at an empty lot? Or are we looking at, you know, some type of a structure?
Okay.
That would help quite a bit as it is to, you know, ride around and look for 30 properties. And you don't know, like empty lots, you're trying to figure out the addresses and stuff like that. So if that could be mentioned on the list, that would definitely help a lot, so.
Okay.
Any further questions? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. City managers report.
Mayor and Council, if you recall, there, you recently voted on the the ability for the special assessments for sidewalks to, for individuals to make those appeals to you. And so that hearing is scheduled for your meeting in June on June 6th at 7:00 PM at your council session. And that public notice has gone out. Individuals can also submit a letter requesting that information as part of their appeal by submitting it to the clerk. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that that is out there. And Mr. Lindsay had already mentioned in regards to the open house for the Oakland Dialysis Center. I had a chance to have a view of the facility. It is definitely first class. And in fact, it's quite scenic in there, so it's an impressive facility. And it's going to be a really nice asset to our community. On a personal note, my mother's last couple of years was on dialysis. So I know how much the quality of the facility means and the ability to be able to talk with people while you're there for several hours a day. And it's very conducive to just being a community-type setting. So it's an excellent center, and we're very proud of it. So again, that's on Tuesday, May 24th, 4:00 to 6:00 PM. The address is 350 B Drive North. Next is open to everyone for the open house. The Chamber is also hosting a business after hours on Tuesday, June 2nd, 5:00 to 6:30 at the Albion Michigan and Tool and Velocity Manufacturing Site at 1001 Industrial Avenue. I believe Holland Park will be there as well as Recreation and some other city projects will be highlighting as part of our contribution to that event of all things wonderful in Albion. And there's going to be a U.S. Army chorus on Tuesday, June 7th at Goodrich Chapel, 7:30 PM. It's free and open to the public, so that's going to be a wonderful event. I think you all have already received information in regards to Memorial Day Parade and those activities. And Pea Pod and Summer Dreams Projects, our programs are open for registration. That'll be June 13th to August 4th. That'll be four days a week. On the fifth day, we have a partnership with Albion, with the Bone Theater. So on Fridays, the students will actually be picked up by our recreation vans brought to the theater. They'll have free popcorn and a movie, and then we'll take them home afterwards. Well, there's five days of programming available for youth in the communities. We're very pleased with that. We just received confirmation from the Albion Community Foundation that we received the grant from them to offer basketball program for youth this summer. We're really excited about being able to extend that program as well. That concludes my report.
Okay. Future agenda items? Yes.
Still, I have two. One, it's just an update on the RFP for single hauler, just to see where we are. Because I don't know if that's going out yet. And then the other is I'm going to request the council, I know we have a work session for the Albion-Marshall Connector coming up. But I'd like to have another one regarding the budget. So just being direct and frank, I know the mayor had raised some concerns about alternate forms of policing in town. And the concern that was voiced was about, I guess, implications for the budget. And so especially after the report from the assessor at the last meeting, I'm curious about what that does for the budget. So I'd like to have a work session in, I don't know, early June to kind of just have an update on where we are at the budget and what implications that would have. So I think that once we have a sense of where we're at, that can let us know whether or not, you know, what the mayor was saying is valid, right? So I think that, you know, I think we need to know that considering especially what the assessor said last week, at the last meeting, so. So I don't know if we need approval for that, but I'm requesting a work session.
Yes.
I would support that. No, I would support that.
Okay. The work session coming out, that's in June. I can't remember the date off the top of my head.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth? Does that have one item that we're going to discuss?
I think it's just the Albion Connector.
Is it just the Albion Connector for the 13th?
There's another one being planned for the Consumers Energy. I don't have that date.
There's one for the Albion Trust.
No, there was, the Albion Trust was also in there.
On the 13th. The Albion Trust and not Marshall, Albion.
Okay, then we don't want to add it to that?
I don't think so.
I don't want to add it to that.
My, Council, we have one on the 13th. It has to do with the connector and the.
And the Albion Trust.
And the Albion Trust. We have council on the 20th, so I think you should forget on Monday.
Twenty-seven?
Want to keep it to Mondays or anything else available to do there?
We might have to go with a different night. Looks like the Mondays are going to be all gone.
I'm open for suggestions. We have council on the 6th and the 20th, and a work session on the 13th.
I can have staff try to get a date because there's two council members not here today, so.
No further, we'll move on to motion to excuse absent councilmembers French.
I was just wondering. In my going around Albion, I'm seeing properties that have just jumped all over the place. I was just wondering if maybe, I know our days are filling up. If we could just take the city van and just go around and look and see some of this stuff and see what we can do to ask people to improve their property, the looks of their property. Because I've also been, I'm all over everywhere anyway. And you go to other cities and you ride down the streets and you just see all of this junk and stuff all over everywhere. And Albion does not have to be that. I remember when we were looking at parks, we all got in the van and we went to the different parks. And we looked at the parks and we identified things that we were bad about them, needed improvement, needed okay. And I really think that we should do that with the clutter that we've got in the city. Because you drive by some houses and it's just plain clutter.
So for future agenda items, you'd like to come back with a trip for the council to trip through Albion and look at certain blight and disgusting areas?
And see what we can do about encouraging.
Do we want to, do on a off day, do we want to do this at oh, dark 30? And just take all day doing it? Or are we selecting just certain areas to do?
Well, we can take different days to do different precincts. Start with mine.
So you want to do six different times?
Three different times?
Well, there's six different precincts, that's why I said.
What I think we probably could do is, let's say, I don't know how, I don't know, I didn't, I did not attend the park one, so I don't know what day that was on. But let's say we did it a Saturday morning. You could have, you know, we each live in our precincts, so I know the first place I'm going to show is, I would show Di Rumpel, Di Rumpel School. So what I'm saying is maybe each of the council members, you know, if they have some spots that they know in their precinct, and we just have a list on a Saturday morning. Yeah.
Can the council get together and do that in a mobile unit without?
You guys can drive around and look at wherever you want. I mean, I think maybe the, in terms of saving you guys a lot of time. I mean, if you have a code enforcement officer, you might just want to ask if you guys have specific properties within your own precincts, you might just want to generate a list and.
I understand that, but I think it's good for the council to get out and do that. But I wasn't sure if the, more than three council people together at one time without having.
Yeah, you guys can, you guys can get together in public just as long as you're not taking any official action in public. So you just can't take any votes or make any decisions.
Okay.
I thought it would be good to do it as a group because if some action is taken by Mr. Tracy or someone, first thing the council is going to get is those people here complaining about him. When it's good to see what it is in the first place.
Most people open like on a Saturday morning or a Saturday afternoon. That we could do that. I still think we could probably do all the precincts if we just took an eight to noon tour throughout, you know, the city. I think what we need to do at this point, being the 16th, between now and before the next council meeting?
You're talking about me?
For the second council meeting?
Maybe the second Saturday in June? I'm like, I know Andy and.
Well, I'll tell you what, Cheryl, if you could get that out and then get an answer back from everybody, make sure the van is available. And we'll shoot for the second Saturday in June. Everybody look at your calendars to make sure.
Is that something you need the staff to do?
I think we need the city attorney, no more. I think we could use him as the driver.
Mobile council.
No, I honestly think that it would just have to be the council, I think, and the city manager, of course. And I think, I think that'd pretty much do it. The only other question, maybe if John, I think if John went with us, he might be able to explain whether it's being worked on or, you know, we have some type of order. That might be, you know, solve a lot of questions or anything else. He also has the camera, that if we feel, if it isn't already logged or whatever, we might be able to do that.
He discussed one tonight with me that's already got three pending on it.
Yeah, so maybe that would be the best of doing that, so. Put that together, get that back out to us and see how many, because I know June's coming up as the start of everybody's summer's vacations and things like that. There's a lot of things going on, so I don't want to tackle everything in June, you know, if we can do it. So if you would do that and get that out as soon as possible, I think that would really help us all, so, okay? Did I do a motion to, motion to excuse? Did I, did I do a motion to, motion to excuse absent councilmembers Frank, French and Barnes?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Okay. Okay, are added to the agenda this evening was discussion and approval of resolution twenty sixteen. Is there supposed to be a number there?
Thirty-four is the number.
Thirty-four is the number.
Thirty-four where the X's are. Um, discharge of the CDBG mortgage for one-one-four West Walnut Street?
So moved.
Motion?
Pardon?
Garrett made the motion.
I'm waiting for, okay. Been moved and supported, okay Cheryl, if you would like to.
Yes, Mayor and Council, on this particular property, it was one of those that received a community development block grant, um, for rehabilitation, I believe, probably back in seven or sometime thereafter. That, um, mortgage, however, was never repaid and our records don't necessarily go back that far, so I can't confirm whether or not it was repaid. But at the present time, Homestead Bank has a buyer who is interested in rehabilitating the property. And the president is here in case you may have some additional questions. But the recommendation to you is that we discharge that mortgage. Um, and they are willing to pay us a sum of one thousand dollars to satisfy some of, um, the outstanding fees associated with that piece of property so that we can go ahead and get this property closed and back on the touch.
Yes, here.
The one question I have is, um, would the state have any record of, of, I mean, or is, or are we just fully responsible for the record of that?
It's my understanding it's our responsibility. The original mortgage was, was properly recorded. It was the financial records relative to it being paid back is what we don't have any, any documentation relative to.
Okay.
You know, it's such a long period of time. Many administrations ago, so.
So that was found in the mortgage records that there was a lien?
Yes.
Against that, was there a date that went with that?
I don't have the document.
During the records? If you would, Scott, please, thank you.
The mortgage with the city of Albion was dated August of nineteen eighty.
Okay, you've said enough.
Seven.
Yeah.
We, we, you know, we have run into this from these CDBG grants before and we've, we've okayed them and we've done that because of the lack of record keeping that we have. Um, can you explain the property to me, Scott? I'm throwing a blanket, one-fourteen West.
One-fourteen West Walnut. It's on the corner of Walnut and either Clinton or.
Clinton, okay.
It's a, it's a green home.
Okay.
Um.
Where's saving?
The, the exterior frame siding roof is in good condition. The inside is completely gutted.
Okay.
Studs.
Okay.
Even, not even some of the second floor is remaining.
Okay. And you're comfortable enough that somebody's going to take and?
Purchase agreement is signed. We delayed closing because when we did more thorough, um, title search, the Albion mortgage showed up. So we have a purchase agreement waiting to close.
Okay, all right. That's good. I appreciate that very much. Thank you. Council? Any further questions? Okay. Roll call vote?
Councilmember Kraus.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes. Thank you all very much. I'm sorry.
Just, just so the council's aware and so that Homestead is aware while they're here, um, I can prepare the mortgage discharge immediately. But probably through no fault of their own, the county register of deeds is super backed up. So I will forward a copy of it to both the manager and who I can, assume can in turn forward it to Homestead. So at least they'll have it while we're waiting several months backlog for it to actually get recorded.
Okay.
But I can have it almost immediately.
Sound understandable, Scott?
And, and the title company can actually record it for you with, if, if you want to make it a part of that transaction. So it's an insured closing, so they can record the discharge at that time as long as it's executed.
That's fine. I can forward it to the manager.
Okay, we'll do that. All right. Thank you. Um, citizens' comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than five minutes. Proper decorum is required. Are there any citizens' comments this evening? Sonia Brown, of course. She only comes here when she wants to.
Of course, she do.
Good to see you.
Sonia Brown, good to see you too, Mayor. Seven thirteen Orchard Drive. I just, I wanted to share with you all. In moving forward with annexation, we've set up two community forums. One of them will be this week, Thursday, the nineteenth, at five-thirty P M. At the Albion Community School Library. The purpose of these community forums is to get the public's input as far as the facilities, the buildings. Uh, as you know, we have Harrington, Crowe, Caldwell and the High School Building. So Marshall is looking for Albion citizens to fill out a, a three-question survey about their preference, um, and how to utilize those buildings and which buildings to utilize. The second community forum will be next week, Thursday, on the twenty-sixth, at five-thirty. So if you could make one of those two nights, it would be, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Brown, are they both at the library?
They are both at the same location, yes. You're welcome.
Sonia?
Yes, five-thirty P M.
For instance, I work till six. Would it still be going on then where I could shoot over?
You could. Uh, the timeframe we set up tonight was from five-thirty to six-thirty or seven P M.
Okay.
So yes. And even if you can't make some meetings, I'm hoping there's a way that we can get those surveys out and, and so everyone can have access to them. We talked about maybe, um, distributing, distributing them online, um, or through churches or just other ways, but I, I wanted to share those two public forums. Okay?
Thank you. If there is no further, I will ask the council for an adjournment.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.